Did I do a mic check real quick? You guys can hear me, we're good. So, let's go.
Hello? Hi, it's Karumi, can anybody hear me? Hello?
For those online who are experiencing some technical difficulties.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Okay, so I'm gonna do the roll call real quick. Um, if you're here present, uh, could you just, um, talk in the mic scene that you're here? Hey, Bass?
Present.
Flores? Flores is here. Uh, Nehe?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Panaaki?
Present.
Him?
Present.
Here.
Thank you. Marilyn Lee?
Present.
Ozawa? Smart, here. Among?
Here.
Creed? He was here on the other end, so I'll check after afterwards. Trotter? Williams?
Here.
Amadi? She's here, okay. Clark?
Here.
Thank you. Darsha Lee?
Present.
Okay, she's online. Stefan? Here. Thank you. Ross?
Here.
Tao?
Here.
Takamine?
Here.
Shina? Teguro? Here. Kukua? Here, thank you. Boy, present. There's nineteen members present, we have quorum, thank you. Thank you, Rachel, we're gonna move on to monthly reports, I'd like to invite the Honolulu Fire Department to report at this time.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, my name is Captain Sean Ray, I'm at the Middlelani Fire Station. And I'll be presenting the incident statistics for February of twenty twenty-four. Uh, fires, structure fires, we had zero. One wildland brush fire. Seven activated alarms with no fire. And sixty-nine medical emergencies. And aside from that, I'll be presenting the fire safety tip and announcement. The fire safety tip is smoke alarm safety tips. Smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas. And on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month. Press the test button to ensure the alarm is working. And if the smoke alarm requires a nine-volt battery, replace the battery each year. Replace smoke alarm unit every ten years or sooner if they do not respond properly. And is there any questions from the board or from the public?
Thank you, Captain, are there any questions, members? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, thank you so much for being here tonight, I hope it's a quiet one. Friendly reminder for those online, please, uh, turn off your microphones, we are catching some feedback. Uh, next, I'd like to recognize Honolulu Police Department Corporal Munna, welcome.
All right, aloha, good evening, everyone, Corporal Munna, District Two, Community Policing Team. Uh, for statistics, uh, stats for, uh, Middlelani so far this month, burglaries, we have four. Thefts, and that could be any kind of theft, anything from a spam would be from seven-eleven to someone getting their purse stolen, uh, nine. Uh, assaults, five, robberies, zero, unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, UEMVs, or just vehicle break-ins, uh, four. And just general calls for service, anything under the sun, uh, six hundred forty-six so far this month. Uh, for any further stats, please visit honolupd.org, uh, that's the website that not only, uh, has that crime mapping website that I've mentioned several times, but now is the home to that new data dashboard. Whole bunch of new stats that you weren't able to get before is on there now, so honolupd.org, uh, you can get any further statistics that you're looking for. For, uh, safety tips this month, I kinda actually wanted to go back to, uh, Neighborhood Security Watch, only because, uh, out of our district, which is a big district. Uh, Middlelani is amazing with Neighborhood Security Watches, you guys lead the pack in that, a lot of active, I think off the top of my head, there, we have about ten active Neighborhood Security Watches in Middlelani alone, and that's not even including the ones that kinda meet on, without us, they kinda police, you know, themselves, they meet on their own. And then in addition to that, that's not even including the ones that have kinda gone dormant since twenty twenty, but they still all have each other's, you know, information in case they wanna get active again. Um, if you ever get the chance to talk to somebody who's part of a Neighborhood Security Watch, I'm sure they can not only tell you, um, how awesome it is, but how it specifically served them in certain ways throughout the neighborhood to prevent crime, so if you're interested in Neighborhood Security Watch, please, uh, give us a call and we can help set it up. Uh, seven-two-three-eight-seven-one-zero is the number to our office, but if you go on honolupd.org, our phone number's on there as well. Uh, the thing with that, though, is when we meet with these groups, not only do we, uh, provide, uh, stats for their, their specific area that might be tailored to their area, but um, when we're on the property, we kinda like to also go over some general ideas that can help make their property a little bit safer. Um, that they're kinda standardizing worldwide now, like, um, hedge height or wall height, nothing over two feet, if you have trees, like a tree canopy, nothing lower than six feet. Uh, anything outside of that gives a great opportunity for someone who might be breaking into your house to conceal themselves, kinda hide in there. Lighting is really good, LED lighting is the best, uh, because it, it's the most specific for colors, so if someone is on your property and your neighbors see it and they wanna call in, uh, LED is great for giving an accurate description of what the colors are, the people that were running, uh, the clothing, the other person that was running away. Um, downward lighting, of course, you don't wanna shine it in your neighbor's yard. Um, fencing, preferably get the fencing that has the, the slats, so you can kinda see in and out instead of, you know, being a barrier. Uh, cameras, so on and so forth, so just one of the things that we can kinda do if we ever meet with, uh, you folks, if you guys have a Neighborhood Security Watch, we can go over more tips when we see you. Um, but that's it as far as safety tips, are there any questions?
Aloha, Corporal Munna, are there any questions from the board? I see, uh, Ed Flores, no, I see Marilyn, followed by Mike Dow, go ahead.
Me? Okay, um, oh, good evening, thanks for being here. I, we have a problem in our neighborhood related to aggressive dogs. And last Friday, uh, three Akitas got boozed from a house right across from Rec. One, I won't tell you the number, but you, you can find it easily. They got out and they attacked two smaller dogs, one very, very severely. It's doubtful whether he may not recover, and the other one was just a shiawawa. And so at the time, I was walking my little dog, who's very vulnerable, very, you know, non-aggressive. I didn't see them, but a woman came down the street with her truck and warned us about an aggressive dog being there. I, I understand that the dog was out again yesterday, and I don't know whether the, uh, aggressive dog attacks have been reported. I have a feeling they didn't report it, 'cause I was told by a neighbor that the people who own the dogs gave them some money to get the dog, uh, well. So I wish you, you could check on it, 'cause right now I'm really kinda frightened to take the dog out. I've lived in that neighborhood for forty years, and the dog is twelve years old, we walk every single day. And, um, it's really frightening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for letting me know that, appreciate it, I'll pass it on for sure.
Just a friendly reminder, uh, please start with your question first, since we want to expedite this meeting, so go ahead, Mike.
Oh, hello. Uh, beginning of the year, I was asking about the drones, were we ever able to find out where legally can people like spy on you in your backyard?
I, you know, let me get back to you on that, I apologize, I don't have the answer, but, um, I'll note this down right now and I'll, I'll send the findings, if that's okay, to Chair Bass and get you the, the answers quicker instead of having to wait till April, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thanks for reminding me, thank you.
Uh, Les, go ahead.
Uh, I want to share, uh, with you, not here, um, live, but, uh, on the side after you finish about, uh, I think I, I've zeroed it down to the district where this person, we have a serial person that keeps burning fireworks. I, you know, and I think I zeroed it down to the exact sub-district where, where he's located at.
Okay.
I'd like to arrange some kind of a watch thing. So, uh, ju- just so we can all work together and that, I'll give you that, I'll just when you get a chance.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Finish your, your presentation, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, members, are there any more questions for HPD at this time? Are any members of the public who have questions for HPD, please raise your hand? Okay, I'm seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Right, we're gonna move on to, uh, the US Army Combat Aviation Brigade of the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division. Is there a representative online? Seeing none, we're gonna move on, I did get communication from Honolulu Board of Water Supply, uh, they did provide a report and they are unable to be here this evening. I will distribute that report, uh, to Rachel as well as to the entire neighborhood board. We're gonna move on to the approval of meeting minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Moved by Secretary Gustafson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Ross, is there any discussion to the minutes before you? Seeing none? Uh, let's see, are there any, are there any members opposed to the minutes? Are there any abstentions? Seeing none, the, uh, the minutes have been approved unanimously. Now, we're going to move on, uh, recently, the Middlelani community in the southwestern area from the, uh, Middlelani, uh, Mari's Garden, all the way down to Rec. Four, Safeway, um, that vicinity and southwest Middlelani has been experiencing some significant, uh, electrical, uh, outages, so I, I just wanted to thank, uh, HICO for coming here tonight. And I'd like to welcome Kurt Suay, uh, the Director of Community Affairs, as well as Michelle Chang, Community Relations for HICO, so that they could provide a report to this neighborhood board and members of the community as to what's going on with these outages and, and what solutions, uh, are there to offer, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, aloha, uh, Chair Bass, board members, elected officials, and community members. Um, my name's Michelle Chang, I'm from the Community Relations Department at Hawaiian Electric, and Kurt Suay, the Director of Community Affairs, is joining me as well. Um, thank you to Chair Bass for inviting us tonight to address the recent outages. Um, we apologize sincerely for the recent outages and frequent outages that Middlelani Town has been experiencing, we realize that it's extremely frustrating. Um, providing safe and reliable electricity to island communities is a responsibility that all of us at Hawaiian Electric take very seriously. The recent outages in Middlelani Town were due to a combination of newly installed wildfire safety settings and faults in underground cables buried directly in the ground, not in conduits, which was the industry, industry standard when Middlelani was developed in the late nineteen sixties. Um, although these cables are underground, the cables are connected to circuits that include a half-mile-long span of overhead lines that are subject to new wildfire safety settings to reduce the potential for sparking and ignition. Our engineers are currently working to determine where the underground cable faults have been occurring and will be designing a project that will help to reduce the frequency of the outages in near term. The project will be to replace a section of underground cables with new cables that will be encased in concrete conduits within the roadways and sidewalks in Middlelani. We're also planning a larger project to replace a large span of cables in the area of Maka PPP Street near our electrical substation with new cables also in conduits. Due to the engineering planning and permitting process required for a project of this size and scope, it may take several months to complete and you may not see the physical construction starting right away. We have begun the engineering process and are targeting construction for the summer of this year, if not sooner. Hawaiian Electric expanded its wilds, wildfire safety strategy to improve public safety in areas identified by the state of Hawaii as at-risk for wildfires, which includes Middlelani. A key element of the strategy may make outages more frequent and last longer in wildfire-risk areas. There is an area in Middlelani where overhead power lines run in the at-risk areas. We've recently enabled the fast-trip setting on circuit breakers at our substation in Middlelani in mid-February of twenty twenty-four in the area where these overlit, overhead lines run at the ask, at-risk area. Circuit breakers will be set to trip or open and shut off power quickly if a disruption is detected, reducing the likelihood of energized lines and sparks falling to the ground. Lines will remain de-energized and not be allowed to automatically reclose to restore power. A troubleman will also perform a physical inspection of the overhead or underground lines to confirm the cause of the fault, which will result in longer outages and extended restoration times. Power will stay off until it is deemed safe to be re-energized. We are currently mailing out letters to residents that are impacted by these outages, and they should be expecting it by the end of this week, explaining the cause of the outages. Um, we thank you for your patience and your understanding, we do realize this is a huge inconvenience, but we're stressing that it's for safety for the public. There's any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Members, are there any questions, okay, as a reminder, I know that there are some, uh, folks in the audience who wanted to ask some questions to HICO, so um, what we're gonna do is I will recognize three board members and then open it up to the public and we'll go back and forth until we hit about seven minutes. Um, so with that being said, friendly reminder to please ask your questions first, are there any questions from the board? Mike?
Hello?
Hi.
I remember you.
Yes.
Um, is this the first area you're trying to make these lines as sensitive to wildfires?
Um, in Middlelani, yes.
In general, for the whole power grid?
It's being implemented, uh, island-wide in areas that are at risk.
Okay, thank you.
See, Board Member Darsha Lee has her hand up, go ahead.
I'm wondering if there are any plans to have better communication strategies with the public when these sorts of things do happen? I think one of the big frustrations with the community was nobody knew what was going on and we just kept on getting our power shut off and nothing could be seen on the website, can't call anybody who has an answer, so I'm wondering if there's gonna be better strategies to actually communicate with the public. I appreciate you being here today, though.
No, um, that's a good question, um, so, um, my recommendation would be for people that are on social media, um, you can subscribe to our Hawaiian Electric page on X, um, and that will have up-to-date information, um, when there is an outage, when it's restored. Um, you can also, um, subscribe to our HICO outage map where you can report the outage and it'll give you an estimate of approximately when the outage will be restored. Uh, that would be my best suggestion, um, unfortunately, because these outage are unplanned, we can't are not planned, we can't give early notice, so that would be my recommendation for people in the public or the community.
Uh, Member Ross?
Aloha, thank you for coming, uh, two questions, so first off, um, you, I have a new smart meter, I have the power app, or, I have the app that you guys have and everything else like that. As soon as Spectrum loses cable, I got a notification saying that happens. Can I get the same thing with the HICO power app or the new smart meters or anything else like that, or is something like that in the works? And then my second question is, right now, you guys have, you're stating that when the power outage, correction, when the high voltage kicks in on the high lines, it's automatically gonna open the breakers, and per your requirements, you're going to need a tradesman or lineman to go out there to reset the breaker and to physically check to make sure it's working. How many linemen do we have just for our area? I know this is gonna be entire Oahu-wide, and I'm so happy that you guys are doing this, but if it's, if you have only three people on the island that can do this entire island mine, then it's not gonna be doing it. Is this person gonna be, is there twenty-four-seven operations, is there somebody dedicated to each subsection, or how, how are you guys playing this out? So we don't have to wait two hours for the tradesman from Hawaii Kai to drive all the way over to check the lines, verify the lines are safe, and then re-energize the area and then wait for all the balancing to happen again.
So for your first question, can I get back to you on that? Oh, okay, Kurt can take it.
Aloha, Kurt Suay, work with Michelle at Hawaiian Electric. Uh, it is something we are planning to offer in the future on the, on the app, it is not instantaneous, as you mentioned, and we're working on that. Uh, we are trying our best to update it via the social media channels Michelle mentioned, but at some point, we are looking at using that real-time data that you mentioned with the advanced meters and using that to prompt notifications to customers, so thank you for raising that. Um, second question regarding, uh, we call them troublemen, but there are roving crews that go around and help with power restorations and the, in the inspections. Uh, we have, uh, they're, they're ro- they are working twenty-four-seven, we have several assigned by, um, district, but they're always roving and sometimes they go to other districts to support, um, roughly, I would say for this ju- district, central Oahu, we try to have around two in the air, in the region to be responsive at all times, but again, those troublemen are responding, um, island-wide if necessary, so we, but we do keep them on call, um, on duty twenty-four-seven, and then we can also bring more on if needed. Thank you.
Okay, that's three questions from board members, are there any members of the Middlelani community and audience who have questions for HICO at this time? Please raise your hand. Okay, so raise your hand, approach your, uh, please approach the microphone, state your name for the record, yes. Yes, and for the folks online, we have to, you know, make sure they hear our questions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a Middlelani resident, I have a photovoltaic, um, not connected to a battery at this present time. If, is it recommended that we get a battery so that we can, uh, do, I mean, get the electricity needed to go through this time?
Good question, and it would, it would help, and we do have some programs right now, uh, to incentivize battery installations for anybody who's interested with existing systems. Um, it was formerly called Battery Bonus, and we have a new program coming out that offers rebates for battery purchases. Um, it depends on your, um, the type of system, batteries you purchase, and you can set it to provide backup power in the event of power outage, so it can be helpful in situations like these, um, and it just depends on what you and your installer work to program it to, to do, but the batteries do have that capability.
So, do we call the photovoltaic people, or do we call Hawaiian Electric to find out the information?
Can provide information about the program, but we encourage everybody to do price quotes, you know, multiple vendors to see what price and what's, uh, system works best for you. But we, we can provide basic information, but we leave it up to the owner of the customer to decide which vendor to select to work with.
We're one of the original photovoltaic install, installation, I'm wondering if it would affect our current plan that we have, that we get credited?
Only if you add more panels to the system, but if you keep your panels as is, it shouldn't affect the agreement, and I'd be happy, I don't need to, Chair, I can take off any questions you have with PV offline, if you may, we can talk some else.
Thank you, are there any other residents of the Middlelani community or members of the audience who would like to, oh, please, go ahead. State your name for the record and ask your question.
Uh, my name is Ken Inoue, and as one of the affected residents of, of this community, uh, by this, uh, situation, um, my question to you folks is, um, do you have any advice on things that we can do in the interim until this is rectified, um, to mitigate these, this problem? Because, you know, as you know, it's unannounced, it spontaneously happens, and, you know, it al- also, it, it has, you know, negative effects on sensitive electronic equipment, so do you have any advice to us or thoughts on what we can do in the interim until this, this issue is, uh, rectified?
Thank you for your patience, we are trying to get that near-term solution in place as soon as possible, as Michelle mentioned. Uh, in the interim, um, just as you would prepare for even a planned outage, uh, we would recommend surge protection for sensitive devices. And, um, you know, in the event of outages, again, um, food supply, making sure that, uh, we try to keep the food cool to spoil. Um, but essentially, it is more so on, on Hawaiian Electric's side, that we need to make those adjustments, to make those, to improve reliability and reduce the frequency of the outages, what you've all been experiencing is, is not acceptable, and we apologize for that.
A, a final question from the members of the audience or Middlelani residents at this time, please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, that is, uh, we're at eight minutes, so thank you so much, uh, for your, yeah. Oh, okay, oh, there, I, I don't see her. Uh, are there any, I mean, we are running out of time, there was seven minutes, Mary, you have a question, Karumi has a question. Okay, actually, this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna have three more questions, that's about it, we're gonna cut this off, we have to do two more presentations, so uh, Karumi, uh, your hand is up, and then we'll go with Mary, and then, um, I'll close out with a question, thank you.
Uh, good, good evening, my question is that one of our districts, uh, sub-districts, uh, YPO seems to be a high-risk area because it is an older part of, uh, Middlelani that still has lines running up above on poles, um, what do you envision for this subsection?
YPO is not in the high-risk area that Michelle mentioned, uh, we do have maps on our website, it's actually based on, uh, State Department of Land and Natural Resources data that we're leveraging at this point. Uh, but we're, we're taking wildfire mitigation seriously from all fronts, so what Michelle mentioned was some of the near-term things we're doing, we're also looking at installing more equipment on our system to monitor, uh, for vegetation, dry vegetation, and in the event of, uh, system disruptions, for more detection capabilities, more remote types of activities, uh, cameras that we can help get a better sense of visibility on what's happening. Um, so we will be definitely coming back to the board with more improvements and mitigation measures that we're putting into place, but your concerns are noted, um, but just confirming that the YPO area is not in that high-risk, uh, area where these, uh, these precautions are being implemented.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay, I heard something about smart meters, are these outages mostly at houses that have smart meters? 'Cause some people I know that don't have smart meters aren't experiencing outages.
Well, fortunately, the ones that have been occurring are on the entire circuit that, uh, substation serves that, uh, Chair Bass mentioned. And it is, uh, more customers than usual because of those sensitive settings that the other board member mentioned, so like, uh, Michelle said, any, any disruption will trigger the system to shut down as a precaution, so what we're working on is at the root cause, trying to address those disruptions.
Thank you again for coming tonight, could you, uh, just remind the board and the members of the community, um, what causes a disruption uh, for these underground cables, as well as how frequently has this occurred? I've been hearing that this has occurred weekly in, uh, this large, uh, sector of Middlelani, so could you So could you cover the frequency of it? And how long the outages have taken?
I'll start there, Chair. It's been, for records, five outages within the past month. So that is roughly about one a week. So again, that's, again, understanding of the frustrations. Other question is the cause. It is due to the cables being buried directly in the ground, as Michelle mentioned. And we have been over time in going circuit by circuit, trying to replace these cables, putting them in conduits. But we move all over the island. But essentially, what happens is these cables, they call it fault. And it causes a system disruption, as Michelle noted. And what we're trying to prevent is any damage to fuses that can cause sparks. And so that's the reason for putting these measures into place. But at the end of the day, it's these faults or these disturbances, underground disturbances that result in the power shutting down.
And sorry, my, 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 the other question I asked was how long do these outages last? One hour?
Yeah, sorry, it's been roughly about an hour. It could be longer, but estimated it's been an hour at least.
Are there any ways that you can, you, you, you mentioned the letter to the Mililani residents. Are there any other ways where you can explain a planned outage? Or this is just because of these disruptions, because these cables are directly in the ground with no protection, there's no way to plan these disruptions? Could you explain that a little?
Yeah, fortunately, these are all unplanned. If we, anytime we do planned construction, we will notify the customers in advance so that we can properly plan and with your device. The question that the resident asked was very well noted, per personal preparations. A lot of these, I apologize to the resident who raised the concern, they happen unexpectedly. And so for these particular ones, we don't have any advanced capabilities for notifying that when the, when those, when these faults occur.
Thank you so much for your time, thank you for being here, and thank you for presenting to our board. We hope to hear from you soon.
We'll be back with more information too, once we have all the permits and everything all lined up. So thank you for your patience.
Mahalo. Okay, next presentation, I'd like to invite Mr. Brian Cunningham, the Chief Executive Officer of Wahiwa General Hospital to, I believe Brian's online, and he's going to be discussing, discussing the recent emergency department closure of Wahiwa General Hospital. Welcome, Brian.
Aloha, Chair Bass, board members, legislators, and community members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and answer questions you might have. I'd like to do an update, obviously, on our emergency department situation. But it's context within an old Wahiwa general problem that many of you are well aware of. This has been several decades in the making. Started several decades ago, we started to have a shrinking physician population in the town of Wahiwa. And less physician input means less patient volumes, which means less cash to fund daily operations, of course, but also the major capital needs of any large building. And so that includes all of your major facilities, systems, such as heating, ventilation, air conditioning, or HVAC systems. And Wahiwa General has suffered over the last decade with a overall degrading of systems. You might remember a couple of years ago, we had to close our long-term care skilled and long-term care unit after 55 years, in part due to infrastructure challenges with HVAC systems. About two years ago, we had to close our ICU and have not been able to reopen it. Once again, slow degrading of the HVAC systems across the building. Just two months ago, we had to temporarily close our inpatient unit for degrading of HVAC system in that area. And then most recently, it has hit us down on the first floor and impacted our ED. So this is a long-term problem that we've dealt with, and I'm sure many of you are well aware. We've had cash flow issues for many years. I've been here for about seven years, serving as the CEO. And right before I got here, there was a big movement, the legislators got together and, and bailed Wahiwa General out. It was about to close. So we have been on a fragile, tenuous pathway for many years. The good news, here's the good news, is, you know, we are, we are blessed with a mission-focused organization, health system in the state, Queens Health System, who has seen in alignment with their vision that they are here to also make sure that the people of central Oahu North Shore healthcare needs are served to the best of everyone's abilities. And they have stepped forward and enthusiastically embraced the service of central Oahu North Shore. And as you well know by now, there's been discussions of potential acquisition of Wahiwa General Hospital by the Queens Health Systems. And we're very close to that, that event. And this was an unfortunate issue that impacted our ED. We are well aware of all of the impacts of the loss of an ED, even if it's on a temporary basis like our situation now. So we want you to know, we understand what everybody's going through. We're working with all of our state agencies, our contractors right now, to get the ED operable as soon as possible. We're asking for your patience, your understanding. The goal is to get the ED up and running and to be delivering essential healthcare services, central Oahu North Shore, as soon as possible. I think there's a bright future for Wahiwa General Hospital after this last 20 years of degradation. There is a bright future with Queens entering the picture with their mission to serve the needs of central Oahu North Shore. I'll stop there, stand for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian. We're going to go and follow the same pattern, so we're going to open up to questions. About seven minutes, we're going to start with board members, three and three. So are there any board members with questions for Wahiwa General Hospital? I see Marilyn, and followed by Mike. Go ahead, Marilyn.
Evening, Mr. Cunningham. Yes, I worked at that hospital for 25 years, so I know the degrading of the conditions were sort of ongoing. The concern that has been relayed to me is the cancellation of some of the diagnostic kinds of services, mammograms, CAT scans, and things like that, being kind of transferred over to Queens West. It's a really long distance for many of the people in Wahiwa and for many of the people in Mililani. And so I'm wondering if, how, how many of the diagnostic services are being canceled out?
Well, that's a sort of a two-part question, Marilyn. Thank you for your service to Wahiwa General over the years, you, you know the story very well. In, in an acquisition like this, Wahiwa General will be closing down as an operation. So all of our systems, all of our services are in the process of closing down. All of our inpatient services wound down this past week. Our outpatient services are winding down as we speak. Right now, we're just really doing walk-in lab at this point. So all of those were scheduled to come down as an element of the acquisition from Wahiwa General's perspective. So we are, we are aware of the challenge that imposes, especially for mammograms, CT, and all that. And again, the hope is that, based on the community needs in this area, that those services will be back in place at some point in the future. But to answer your specific question, that is part of the wind down of the hospital, all of those services.
Thank, thank you. It's, I think it's pretty devastating also to physicians who work in the community because they've got to tell their patients that, you know, you've got to go all the way to West for some of these things that we got used to getting at, at Wahiwa. And so I hope it's sooner than later. Well, maybe I should ask the Queens people.
Well, actually, we'll recognize Queens in their presentation. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thanks, Mr. Cunningham.
Next up, Mike, and I see Dennis has his hand up, so we're going to go with Mike then Dennis.
Okay, well, I didn't realize Queens is going to come up. That's what I was going to ask, are they going to demolish the hospital or try to remodel it?
Okay, so just, I'll, I'll take that. For, in terms of the acquisition and future operations, we have Queens here. They're going to be making a presentation to that effect following Brian's presentation right now. He's working on the current operations of Wahiwa General. So when we talk about acquisition in future, that, that's more appropriate for Queens. So if you have any questions for Queens, let's just hold off at this time for their presentation. Dennis, I see that your hand is up now, go ahead.
Yes, my question is, you're winding down, but you close all those different departments. Are they up now? Or are you looking at how many months before the HVAC system goes back up?
So yes, we're closing down all, all patient care departments in preparation for the acquisition. So we're winding down this week. And as far as the work on the ED, the vendors are still up in the ceilings and working through that. We don't have an exact date. I guess, you know, at this point, it's definitely going to be at least several more weeks, but I don't have an exact date for you at this time. But I know that everybody's working as soon as possible.
Okay, long-term care system, that's already done?
That's been closed for about two years now.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious, where did everybody go?
Well, you know, the, the, the good news, I mean, it impacts people that work locally, but the good news in healthcare is there are jobs everywhere. Anyone who works in a nursing home, every nursing home is, is asking, competing for people. So no shortage of healthcare jobs. You may have to travel a little bit, that's unfortunate, but no shortage of healthcare jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's three questions from board members. Are there any members of the community or Mililani residents who would like to ask questions for Wahiwa General Hospital at this time in relation to their closure? Check online. Please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. Are there any other board members who would like to ask any final questions at this time for Wahiwa General Hospital?
Chair, I got a message from someone privately for a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is Shaki Materos. The question is, Wahiwa General is a community hospital. Why wasn't the ER closure communicated more with the small community of Wahiwa? News reports had no one from Wahiwa General included, just the head of the EMS. Wahiwa General's social, social media account were quiet and nothing was posted for the past four years. Some of the question is, why wasn't the ER closure communicated?
Well, thank you for the question. Communication is always a challenging thing, as you all know. You never get it right, you never get enough of it out there. We have done our best, we were on the news, local media, radio, working with HHEN. We did our best to get out the community signage. We're a small organization, we have small teams doing really all of the work around a situation like this. So we apologize for not getting the word out to everybody. We knew we wouldn't be able to get it out on day one, but hopefully, everybody's got the word, this unfortunate word over time. Appreciate the question, though. And Chair Bass, if, if I may, before we, we move on, I just want to mention, I just appreciate you all. And when I see this board and the other neighborhood boards, you know, representative of the communities you serve, I just want you to know that, as you can imagine, our hospital board is a reflection of you all. Our hospital board is made up of people that were born and raised in Wahiwa, physicians. We have multiple physicians who've been working there 30, 40 years. This is really an incredible, credible group of people, and they have one mission in mind, and that's to serve that your healthcare needs. They are truly doing their best, administration is, everybody in our organization, all our staff. And we're just asking for your understanding and patience. We, we get the impact on this, and we are going to work to make sure that that ED gets up as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair Bass.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any other questions for Wahiwa General Hospital at this time? Please raise your hand. Brian, I actually have a question, if you could. Some of the residents I've heard from had some concerns in relation to, what would hap, what hap, excuse me. What happened to the patients? Where are the patients, were the patients rerouted to another hospital in, in the area? You know, what's the care in terms of the patients that were at Wahiwa General Hospital prior to closure? And, gosh, I'm forgetting the second question, so go ahead with that one.
Sure, yes. And you know, there's been some good media coverage on that. Dr. Ireland, who's head of EMS system, has been speaking on that. We served about 40 to 50 patients a day. Most of them walk in from our community, and about eight to 10 of those were ambulance. And of course, the ambulance systems are all involved to make sure that the ambulances get distributed appropriately across the closest facilities. They're very used to that, that drill. And the walk-in patients are now driving down the road, right? They're going to go to West, or they're going to go to Polimomi, closer facilities, or then into town. This is an impact on our community and a true concern that we acknowledge.
Thank you for that, and you actually jogged my memory for the second question that I've received from residents in the area. What is the estimated, is there any estimated delay in terms of providing emergency medical services for residents of Wahiwa, Mililani, and North Shore? Now that they, those emergency medical patients need to be rerouted, is there a timeframe of delay? How many more minutes in terms of transportation?
You know, depending on time of day, yeah, there'll be a delay. If you live a minute from the hospital now, you have a 15-minute minimum, right? 15, 20-minute ride down the H. So I, I don't have the exact figure, but you, you all know, driving down the H, going towards Western Polimomi, on a good day, it's 15, 20-minute delay. Ambulances obviously make it a little bit quicker. And there are some imaging facilities in Mililani, so that relieves some of the burden. But there is no doubt the community's concerns are valid. It is a delay.
Well, thank you so much, Brian, for this educational presentation. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we appreciate your hard work here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Bass, appreciate it.
Okay, next up, in terms of the acquisition in future of Wahiwa General Hospital. Drum roll, no, I'd like to recognize Robin from Queens West to give us an update in terms of acquisitions and plan and future operations for our central Oahu community. Thank you, Robin, for being here.
Thank you, Chairman. And I brought my chief medical officer, Dr. Ron Carota, with me here because he could answer that last question that you had. So I just want to thank you. Brian did a great job of kind of sharing what the current state is for Wahiwa. I think when we went into the acquisition to kind of do a transfer, initially, we thought it would be seamless, where it would be operating, we would have a full complement of existing employees come over. And with HVAC issues coming up and multiple things kind of falling down, that closure was pretty devastating, not only for your community, for us also, because it, one, made us take a step back and look at everything that needed to be done to really shore up the facility and how we would do it at a compressed timeline, knowing that the last thing we want is not having any emergency services up at Wahiwa. So we knew that when we took it over, that would be a standalone emergency room, because to do the existing hospital, that was just, that was a huge undertaking. And that we'll have to look at down the road and listening to. I love the question about the imaging here, because that's the things that we want to hear about. We do have, when the acquisition happens and we're ready to open, we will have CAT scan, portable X-ray, ultrasound, in the emergency department with a laboratory and respiratory, along with a full complement of emergency room physicians and nurses, VR techs and all that. But as we get past that, we'll want to look at the outpatient services that you spoke about. Mammal is a huge thing that we know that we want to bring on. So we're going out and listening to the communities and saying, okay, what's important? We've heard mammal and diagnostics closer to home. So we're taking all of that in. So when we're strategizing on, okay, what do we bring up first? We know that that will be the first thing that we can probably bring on quicker on outpatient services. And so we're trying to figure out that right now. Hired a bunch of employees in a contingent status because part of that was waiting for the acquisition to actually happen. So Brian's been doing a lot of work. So, Brian's been doing a lot of work to make sure that all of the, his side of the paperwork is done. Queens is doing our side of the paperwork. We're targeting still for hopefully an April second date on that. Um, it was questionable that that could be pushed back a little bit, but that looks like it's on time. But right now, it's how do we get the emergency department up to speed and under like good HVAC, FGI guidelines? I've learned more than any nurse would ever want to know about air handling, HVAC, connection systems, and you're like flooring and saturation and all of that. It could be a really good project construction foreman right now, because I am just, I just want that emergency room to open up once it's ours. So, Brian and his team have been really gracious on sharing information. So, basically, the contractor team that's in there now can actually switch over with Queens to continue all the work. And then, we're just waiting on a few long lead items to really get the air quality, uh, up to a standard that is patient care-ready. Questions? I'm sure there's a lot, there's been just.
Before we have any questions, I just, uh, could you update us on the certificate of need?
So, um, thankfully, I've heard that certificate of need, which was one of the major things on the acquisition. So, we needed that because we really wanted to secure the employees, secure the acquisition and have that. So, I feel like that is on track right now, and it, like, it could be any D that will know, um, actually what the status is. It's good, so I'm getting it, so it might have got.
And could you clarify what a certificate of need is for the public here, the rest of us non-medical workers?
He submitted all of it for us. This is J.C.
Aloha, uh, Chair Bass. So, certificate of need is something that, um, if there's an acquisition of a hospital, anyone who's acquiring a hospital, it's required by state law that we go to the state, um, uh, the ship to office under the Department of Health to submit this request. And it basically covers, um, any major infrastructure that we're going to take on, uh, the impact to the overall community, regional and statewide health system, and other impacts to, to healthcare around the state. So, they do a review of that, um, and we just got, um, approval today from the state that that has gone through, so.
Thank you for the update. Uh, with that, we'll open it up to questions, same format, three from the board, three from the public. So, please raise your hand to be recognized. I see Elise, followed by Mike, followed by Marilyn.
Hi, is your intention to provide a in, uh, an inpatient hospital facility there or not?
At the moment, our intention is to provide emergency services, so the emergency department access. Uh, the inpatient area, that will need a lot of work. So, I would say right now, the goal is get emergency services up and running right.
No, I understand, but for the long term, what is your intention?
I think as we're looking through this, um, to see kind of what we're able to salvage from the building, if it, if we even can, so we're going to work on that and see, uh, what that looks like.
Well, it's just that this community has been very concerned about the lack of hospital facilities. You know, concerned, if we didn't have Wahihua, you know, uh, we've got nothing. So, um.
Yeah, I, I hear you, and we will take that back when we're going to our board and trying to advocate on what is, what do we need right there? We're, um, doing the same thing down in Queens West, looking at, you know, we need additional hospital beds. So, across the state, I think right now, there's a lot of inpatient beds that, that are needed. So, we'll definitely take that and bring that back to the organization.
Mike, go ahead.
Oh, hello. Um, I noticed over here it said Koha Ridge Medical Campus. Is that part of the plan here?
No, um, we're not part of the Koha Ridge, uh, medical campus. I think that was from twenty twenty-one. The Wahihua Hospital Association, I believe, is still, uh, part of that, but Queens is not associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Marilyn?
Thanks again for coming. Um, as a Queens patient, I, I have to say that in the beginning of, you know, the plan for Queens to take over, you were allowing some of the specialists to come out and have appointments at the hospital. And that was a wonderful improvement. Um, I personally, um, had two, um, I won't tell you which ones, but that I had appointments without here, and then all of a sudden, that crashed, and they're not coming out anymore. But that's something really important, too, because it's a long way to these other places, and there's a lot of traffic, and so, I hope that that's in the plan for the future.
I think, so, my background is a community health nurse. So, access to care closest to home is really important to me, and looking at what, what is needed. So, I think that's the work that we're going to look at, is what is those appointments that take a long time and are recurring, that you go out there? And then, what are other future thinking opportunities where maybe the specialist stays there, but we set up an area where you come in, and then you can do a telemedicine visit on something? So, I think it's being creative on what works for the population that we have, because I'm at the generation where I have to tell my kids to show me how to FaceTime yet. So, I know that's not easy, but having like an area where somebody can go in and someone help navigate you so that you can get that specialist, but that's all in the work. We, we want people to get the care closest to home, because then you increase compliance, which actually helps the longevity and preventative care. So, it's the overall goal for what we're hoping to accomplish.
Absolutely, that's, that's really the concern, and, you know, for instance, dermatology is one of the areas that we don't have any, anymore, and, um, it's, it's a big deal in Hawaii. So, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, those are, oh, go ahead.
If I could add a little bit to that question, uh, first, thank you all for volunteering your time as neighborhood board members, uh, to speak for your community. Um, I'm Ron Coroda, I'm a emergency room doctor, as also the chief medical officer for Queens West. Um, some of the investments that Queens has been doing for Wahihua over the last couple of years has actually been to bring some of the specialists out to the emergency departments, such as cardiology, neurology, behavioral health, things that, as Brian was talking about, it's really challenging to get those types of specialists on a regular basis up in the central Waukeah community. So, we'll probably continue that type of, um, technology outreach, especially with the new emergency department coming up. Um, your question as far as for EMS and what kind of services, I just want to point out that we're working very closely with the Honolulu City County EMS. Ambulances, regardless of what your experience has been with them, those are basically ICUs on wheels. So, the type of treatment, if you really need it, when you call nine-one-one in the, on the Waukeah, is top-notch. They can stabilize at your home or wherever you are, and then get you to a hospital. Um, so, that first touch at the place where you are soonest is actually sometimes better than getting in a car and coming to the, um, hospital. And then, the City County is redistributing, they're monitoring actively, and, and a lot of respect to them. They're seeing what the capacity and the busyness of the different emergency departments in West Oahu, as well as in urban Honolulu, and they're taking people to where they could get the care the fastest at this point, until we're able to open up, um, the Wahihua Hospital Emergency Department again.
Thank you so much, that's very, uh, that's wonderful to hear that clarifying answer in terms of, uh, EMS response. We had three questions from the board members. I want to be mindful of the members of the community. Are there any members of the community and Mililani residents who have any questions? Please approach the microphone and, uh, introduce yourself for the record and ask your question. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judith Kawamura from Mililani. I have a question regarding emergency room care. Once the patient gets stabilized in the emergency, what happens to that person? That because you don't have nursing floors, do they have to ship out to another hospital? So, it's easier to go straight to the hospital that is willing to take you?
Um, when we look at the number of people who come to the emergency department, actually, in a community hospital like Wahihua, probably only about ten percent of the people that come in need to be hospitalized. So, it's going to be that one in ten people. Uh, we have a pretty robust system of, um, transferring patients from Queens West to downtown. From Wahihua, we could see if we had space at Queens West. We have a lot of services, um, here on the west side, uh, gastroenterology, surgery, orthopedics, if there's a broken hip. So, it is finding out where the, um, available space and the specialists are. Uh, Wahihua being a part of Queens Medical Center actually opens up a lot of doors for patients who live in central and central Waukeah and the North Shore to be able to get plugged into, um, one of the Queens hospitals, as well as we want to make sure that we continue the relationship with Castle Medical Center on the winter side, because historically, there's been a lot of folks that, um, have gone to Wahihua and needed care and have chosen to go to Castle as well. So, we don't want to totally shut out the relationships that patients have with, um, different hospitals at this point. And so, we're going to continue to keep, um, working that out.
So, it depends on the openings, not the choice of the patient's family or patient, of where they're transferred to for further care?
Um, we'll respect the request. If they have, I, my doctor goes to this hospital, uh, say Kaiser, actually, for example. Um, uh, there's a lot of Kaiser members of the Mililani area. If they say, hey, I, my doctor's at Kaiser, I want to see, I need to be hospitalized, let's see if Kaiser has space, we will a hundred percent make that connection and see if Kaiser has space. But if not, um, if the patient really does need care, we'll find someplace so that they can get that. Um, at Wahihua, the emergency department will have, um, emergency department physicians, the nurses. The technology is going to be very good, uh, blood products will be there as well. So, a lot of things that you'll need for that time will be there as we find the right place to go for whatever that need is.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, questions from Mililani residents, members of the audience? I see that Shekki has her, has your hand up.
Chair, she wrote the question to me, so I can read it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, I've heard otherwise about Queens Medical Center, Center and Koha Ridge. Do you think Koha Ridge outpatient services will be implemented before the next phase of Queens Medical Center, Central Waukeah? I heard that Queens Medical Center wanted to make sure Koha Ridge was included in the Wahihua General Hospital acquisition. And then, that, another question is, so are you saying that Queens Medical Center has nothing to do with Koha Ridge?
Um, at this point, we would love, you know, uh, as Brian said, we're a very mission-driven organization. We've been watching how central Waukeah has been doing, knowing that Wahihua General Hospital, its emergency department and all the services are really important. So, um, we've been watching and knowing that if Wahihua ever did get in trouble, somebody would have to go in and do something to make sure that central Waukeah has care. The Koha Ridge project is there, and as, um, Robin said earlier, it is part of the Wahihua Hospital Association. In the big picture, it's going to be their choice. Uh, we would want to be involved in care for central Waukeah, um, but we're not actively involved in the Koha Ridge project as of this time.
Okay, I'm going to just jump in on that, since there is some history to that, um, especially with this board, and I think Mike touched on it as well. Um, there was a condition, a land use condition, uh, in which, uh, the developer is, it made a commitment to the central Waukeah area for, uh, medical campus. Um, I do believe that there was a record of discussions with the developer and Queens and the Wa- Wahihua Hospital Association, all three. Um, that being said, given where we are today with, uh, the, the upcoming closure of the Wahihua General Hospital, with the acquisition of Queens, of the Wahihua General Hospital, just so that we're all very clear, i- i- am I correct, um, that Queens is no longer involved in terms of the Koha Ridge Medical Campus? And that is solely a conversation ongoing between the developer, Castle &amp; Cook, as well as the Wahihua Hospital Association? Is that a correct summary?
That is a hundred percent correct summary.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the members of the public? Wait, we're going to, I just want to make sure members of the public had an opportunity. I see a lot of members of the board have questions. Okay, we're going to flip it back to members of the board. I see that Dennis has his hand up, followed by Sabrina, followed by Ann. Go ahead.
Uh, real quick questions. Uh, right now, if somebody on the North Shore or on the highway going to the North Shore gets, uh, injured or whatever, are the emergency, is there an emergency room in Kahuku Hospital? Or, uh, is there plans for, for example, drop clinic in Mililani to have some emergency care available? That's it.
Uh, Kahuku Medical Center does have their emergency department and is up and operating. Um, if an ambulance picks somebody up in a real bad, uh, injury, at this point, except for one urgent care clinic, they do have to go to a hospital emergency department. So, um, the protocols for them don't allow them to go to other places other than emergency departments, but Kahuku is up in operation.
Okay, Sabrina?
Can you elaborate on what circumstances during this time that it's closed that people would be okay to be going to an urgent care instead of an emergency room?
A physician question?
Um, the general, uh, idea is things that you would say you definitely have to go to emergency department, if you have problems breathing, um, if there's something that's bleeding that you can't stop bleeding, uh, chest pains that are unusual, uh, for things that you've normally had, or any signs of a stroke. So, those are the, the, uh, big bullets that we usually tell people, signs of strokes, where you can't talk right, you can't move part of your body, chest pains that are concerning, um, bleeding that can't be controlled, or difficulty breathing. Uh, the nine-one-one system is actually very good and very responsive. There's ambulance units all over the island. Um, sometimes you can call if you're concerned, and they can come and assess you. Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to transport you to an emergency department. Uh, they can make some recommendations, and it will be up to you. But definitely, those key, um, symptoms that somebody would have, I would say, uh, go to emergency department to get checked out rather than, uh, urgent care. But sore throat, runny nose, body aches, um, those types of things, sometimes if you twisted your ankle. A lot of the urgent care is now already upping their, um, game as far as for what they have. Uh, there's a Queens Island urgent care in Pearl Kai, as well as, uh, Eva Beach that do X-rays. So, they can actually figure out if there's a broken bone and splint those, and avoid emergency department visits and the waits.
All right, thank you. Ann, you have a question?
Oh, let's be quick, so, because you folks before me kind of raised what I was interested in talking about. So, first off, I just want to thank, uh, Brian and Queens for being here, you know, God bless you. I've had great experiences in the ER at both places, Queens West in particular, but I'm able to drive out there, so. So, um, Chair, this is kind of maybe for the future. We get a presentation from Castle &amp; Cook and whoever it is they're talking to, because the last, uh, news item or any information about that Koha Ridge Medical Center was in twenty twenty-one. So, as, as we up here on the board know, we're very skeptical of promises made by Castle &amp; Cook, because they have fallen through before in the past. And this was supposed to be a condition of them building a, uh, community that's gen- going to generate a, a traffic tsunami up here. So, um, we have that concern now. So, my only, my, my one question or maybe suggestion is, what about a shuttle of some kind between Wahihua and Queens West? I mean, Queens West, I can't say enough about the facility. It's the, the, the people are great, the facility's modern, and, you know, if, if we had a way to get people who were not like severely impaired, you know, to that emergency room, that, that would be good. And the other thing I just want to say is a cautionary tale, an ambulance ride is over a thousand dollars. And I'm fortunate, I'm a veteran, and, you know, I can get that paid. But I'm quite sure there's a lot of people in this community who cannot, and so, getting in an ambulance, no matter how bad they are, is not an option for them. So, that's, that's it, I, just that one question, what about a shuttle?
We appreciate, um, hearing like the, the needs over here. We've been working with our native Hawaiian health department, doing some navigation, where we actually offer like pickups, but those are more for like routine, because they're recurrent visits. So, we'll take that back and see if there's anything we can do in the future. But thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, I see that there are some other questions. Yeah, I see that there are some other questions. Darsha, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for being here. Um, I know it, it sounded like an inpatient facility was not a possibility at Wahua right now. And I was wondering if there are any thoughts about, um, doing things that might help with discharges such as medical respite or Kohale partnerships with the, um, the city or the state.
So Darsha, is that for like the discharges from the emergency room at Wahua once we, once we acquire it?
Um, discharge from the emergency room, um, discharges from Queens West, discharges from
Yeah, 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 okay.
From, uh, any care from?
I thank you for that. We are partnering with a bunch of medical respite, trying to figure out ways to discharge not only our emergency room patients that don't have, um, that ideal disposition to go to. So there's like two-two birds and things like that, that we have strong social workers and case managers that work on that. Um, also it's the community health centers and looking at what that wrap services look like for a lot of patients. For the inpatients, we're working on a lot of initiatives and partnerships to transition, um, the more complex but ready for discharge so that it can free up access at both campuses. Because our mona mona campus in town and west where the volumes are quite high. So we have full engagement with our hospitalist team, all the ancillaries, making sure that when the patients are ready for discharge, they have appropriate care coordination going on so that they can connect. It, it is a challenge, the amount of patients that are coming in on both campuses are significant. And year over year, it's been an increase. So, um, some of the work that we're doing on the both campuses is expanding the emergency rooms. And at the west campus, it's actually adding on a whole second floor that will have about 24 more beds. And that will help decompress, uh, the amount of patients that we have. So there's a, a clearer flow and that we're not, um, transferring intra-facility so much between the existing, our town campus and our west campus. And that's all in anticipation on being able to support the Wahua campus closest. So if we can get that up and running, it improves the access. So we won't have patients waiting in the emergency department at Wahua for waiting on a transport and, and going, okay, where are they going to go? We want them to go to the quickest place and, and this, I'll say this on, from me. It doesn't matter whether it's within Queens Health System, if it's at Polimomi, if it's at Castle, if they have a bed and that's where the patient needs to go, that's what we will do to work to get the patient there. They just need to get in, in that place. So the beauty of having the Wahua emergency room open is you get that stabilization quickest at home and then in your neighborhood, and then we get you to the next place if in fact you need an admission. But the goal would be is if we can discharge and it's something that would need just some care coordination and follow-up for some follow-up though, we're going to work on that. And if, if it takes trying to coordinate, how are you going to get to that? We're going to pull our social work teams in to look at what are the needs? Is it transportation? How do, how do we work through that? It's part of entering in the community. It's a commitment that we're making. It's supported by our leaders. So that's the work that we're going to be doing, um, once we can get the building open and start seeing patients.
I'm so sorry, my question was like that space. Like, I know that patient is not a feasible thing right now, but were they thinking of using the space at Wahua General for things that could easily be placed and taken away? Like medical respite or Kohale?
Uh, yeah. So I have so much visions on that existing space, on what we can do out there. That HVAC issues and the building conditions would be the first challenge and obstacle, obstacle to get over. And one, it's making sure that, um, it, it's up to code. Even if it wasn't hospital grade, there, there's some issues that, um, it's unfortunate, but we, we couldn't do it. We really couldn't do anything in that existing space right now.
Are there any final questions for Queens at this time? Uh, I, let me just check online, Marilyn, uh, see if any hands are up. Nope. So, uh, why don't you go ahead Marilyn and then I will, uh, ask a question in the end.
Thank you. And I don't mean to be so chatty, but I'm very interested in this subject matter. But, you know, back in the day, we used to have an air evac there in Fred Wright Park. Patients who were near drowning would come there, they'd be stabilized and go directly down to Queens. But now there's nothing like that. So what's, what's there for, um, near drowning patients?
So, as I was saying, if something really bad happens like at the beaches, the, the fire, uh, firefighters, lifeguards and EMS can stabilize people and bring them to Wahua. Um, when, when the Iraq war started and, uh, um, I believe it was the Schofield, you know, Wheeler unit for the Blackhawks got pulled out. Um, we've been asking a lot in, from the state's side, but it doesn't look like that asset's going to be able to be returned. Um, being a former EMT, uh, here on the island and, um, knowing some of the dangers of flight, it's something that we really have to weigh because, um, uh, the risk for the crews, for the patient versus the time saved, um, it has to have a real big time benefit. Uh, from Wahua to say someplace like Queens West or someplace like, um, Polimomi, where there would be an ICU where the patient could get stabilized and hospitalized. Um, we're talking about in an ambulance, maybe about 20 minutes. The time to get a heli- a Blackhawk or helicopter warmed up from say Honolulu International Airport to the site and then to pick up the patient and then to come to another hospital, um, you could probably put them in an ambulance in that period of time. We really want to make sure that all of our first responders and medical professionals know that to take those risks for the people, the risk benefit, it's a very serious thing that we take.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I used to see the, um, helicopters landing on the roof of Queens. This is a while ago, but, but, um, uh, yeah, I think the, um, stabilization at, uh, Fred Wright Park was rather rapid and off they went, so.
They, they still do, um, fly the helicopters from the neighboring islands, uh, onto land at the, um, Queens mona mona campus. Um, because that definitely you have to get them over the ocean.
Thank you.
Okay, final question, Robin, for you. Uh, would you remind me the timeline and plan of all this? I know we're waiting for the HVAC restoration so that we can undo some upgrades to be in compliance for ED. But what's the, uh, where are we? How long are we talking?
How long are we talking? So I'm targeting for mid-May and bring on it every night. That we don't see something else pop up unexpected. If everything stays status quo right now, it should be mid-May that we're hitting it. But every, you know, like, it was every week we were finding out something new and we were watching Brian. And then when they shut down, we're like, okay, let's see how it goes. So at this time, it's mid-May. The contingent employees that we have right now because of that delay, we're actually going to have some things for them to do. Um, because they won't have, they, they wouldn't have had anything otherwise. So Queens stepping up and just bringing them in the Wana a little bit earlier right now, once that acquisition is done. Um, and then, um, I'd be happy to come back and then give you guys an update on kind of where we are, how it is. And especially if we project that it's going to be something longer than expected. Definitely we'll, we'll be communicating that. But I don't see that at this point right now, so we're, we're really targeting for that date.
Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate the time you've taken out to present to us. So thank you, Queens. And I know it's been about a month and a half to arrange this, so thank you so much for coming here. And it, maybe it's, it's great news that the day you got the certificate of need is the day you came to the neighborhood board in Milani.
I mean, we really appreciate it. We, we did another previous neighborhood board and we're going to go out to North Shore Neighborhood Board because we know that it, this is important to everyone that Wahua is serviced. So thank you everyone for helping to coordinate that and extending the invitation to us to come and just kind of share where we're at, what, where we think we're headed, be transparent about what we don't know what we're going to do yet on it. So thank you for that.
Really appreciate you folks being out here, thank you. I'm going to just track back, um, since there were a couple of questions in relation to Wahua Health Association. And, uh, I see Brian hasn't, uh, signed off just yet. Um, so I wanted to ask a question to, uh, Brian in terms of the conversation for the Coral Ridge Medical Campus and the, and, and he talks with, uh, Wahua Health Association and Castle and Cook. Could you address that, Brian? Could you share with us, uh, any progress to that effect?
I sure could, uh, Chair Bassin. Sorry, my camera is a little wonky right now, but I can see and hear you all. Um, so yeah, you know, as Robin described and as you all were talking, uh, you're right on. The Wahua Hospital Association, although I'm not a spokesperson for the Wahua Hospital Association, I do know that the project, the Coral Ridge project sits in the hos- the hospital association. And they have a development partner, they're called the Ion Group. That's a local group architecture design group. That's their, their development partner. And of course they're working with Castle and Cook who set up the parameters for the medical campus. I do know that project is moving forward. I do know that they're still in design phases for the 16.5 acres, uh, that they're working on getting deeded from Castle and Cook. They're doing design work, they're looking to get the projects phased and funded. And it would be great, uh, I'm sure in the near future, Wahua Hospital Association would love to come out and update you. But that project is moving slowly but surely forward.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Brian, thank you, much appreciated. We might, uh, we might have, uh, Wahua Health Association come out and talk to us about that. I, I think we have some curious board members. All right, thank you so much, uh, to Brian, to Hiko and to Queens. Thank you so much for coming here tonight. We're going to move on to community concerns. Um, at this time, uh, is there any community member who would like to come forward to express any comment or concern? Um, of, or any, report of any events within the community at this time? Please, uh, raise your hand, approach the microphone, state your name for the record, thank you.
I'm Judith Kawamura. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on my reporting of the pollen trees in Mililani. I attended the recent MTA Board of Directors meeting on 3/13/24. And after listening to my presentation, all they said was go to the city and county. Um, so after that, I made further, um, arrangements to meet with MTA General Manager, David O'Neill, and we're supposedly scheduled to meet tomorrow at two o'clock at his office. Uh, I'm going to present to him, um, the questions of better understanding the roles of, uh, of the MTA regarding community concerns and issues. Number two, how we can possibly work with city and county in a more productive, proactive way regarding the community's concerns and issues. Uh, example would be the falling trees. I recently spoke with Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Urban Forestry Administrator, Roxanne Adams, and asked her if she would provide some in-service training regarding the CNC trees in Mililani Town. And she accepted my request. Um, so I plan to ask David O'Brien tomorrow regarding this and see how we can arrange this needed in-service. And if you folks want to join us, you can.
Thank you so much, welcome back. All right, are there any other community members who would like to report of any events or community concerns at this time? Please raise your hand. I see none, so we're going to move on. Uh, we're going to go into the reports of chairs and board committees. Um, as far as the chairs report, members, uh, this, there was, I received quite a lot of interest, uh, from residents in the Milani community regarding our, uh, agenda tonight. There, as, as I've mentioned throughout tonight's meeting, um, there are many concerned residents from the Makati area, um, as well as, uh, concerns that I have received in terms of the acquisition to Wahua General. Also received a message, so I'm going to make a quick point of clarification that, uh, I need to correct myself, it wasn't a land use condition in terms of, uh, the Castle and Cook Coral Ridge development. Uh, there was no land use condition for a medical campus, but it's a representation that is held by a condition to apply representations. So thank you for that legal correction. Um, that being said, are there any other questions for me on my chairs report? Seeing none, we'll go on to community partnerships and community outreach is Alex Ozawa online. Seeing none, we'll move on to community recognition and service awards, Josie?
No report, thank you.
Okay. Community maintenance and WAF audit, Martina?
Hi, so I do have something to report. I updated and kind of made the WAF audit form more accessible to the community and board members. So the link to access that form is on the agenda.
Thank you, Martina. Uh, planning, zoning, sustainable development and climate resilience, Trevor?
Uh, Madam Chair, your planning, uh, sustainability and resilience chair, uh, has a brief report. So there are two bills that are being heard in the legislature next week. This is a joint hearing between the House Committees on Housing, Water, Land and Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. They'll be hearing Senate Bill 3202 and Senate Bill 2948. These are two bills that are attempting to address the shortage of housing, um, here in Hawaii. So SB 3202 has gotten some flak because, um, it would essentially compel the counties to a lot of smaller lot sizes. And SB 2948, um, requires, um, commercial properties to be allowed to be used for residential purposes, um, provided like, uh, like, um, certain requirements are met. And so you're, unfortunately, um, we, due to time constraints, um, there was, we're not, um, this is not something that was able to be added to tonight's agenda. However, um, just for your information, I will be testifying and support as an individual on both of these bills. And so, you know, if this is something that you have an opinion on, you'll take a look at the hearing notice and you'll feel free to add your own two cents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, again, you'll be testifying as an individual and not on behalf of our board. Thank you. Okay, next up, transportation and OMPO, uh, member Ross?
Uh, aloha, so all of the updates and, uh, CAC meetings, uh, minutes were posted inside the uh, Neighborhood Board Google Drive, uh, under the OMPO. Uh, two things I wanted to highlight was first was Department Transportation had an organizational structure, breakdown of the three different, uh, organizations or three different, uh, entities that they have. City Streets, which directly falls under transportation engineering. The Skyline, which is operated by Itachi Rail Honolulu. And then the Bus and the Handy Ben, which is operated by Waho Transit Services. And it goes, it breaks down on how many people there are, how many positions and what's the rate of how much each one's been, is, is somewhat costing. Um, they also have a breakdown of their new, um, transit, uh, facility for traffic management. Uh, and then they kind of give out what their future plans are going to be. Um, they did a transit rider survey and asked people around the island how long it takes for them to get to work and things like that. Uh, it's very important on that part because in our area, we're actually red over, uh, 35 minutes and 25 minutes is in our, the general area of Milani. Uh, and then further west, um, is also the affected red areas. So, um, that's one big thing that they're slowly looking into. Uh, but you guys can read the rest of the information regarding that. The next thing that they wanted to go over was the new plan that the, um, Charlie's Taxi is going to be, uh, proposing. Um, they're requesting for the city and county to remove the restriction on how much it costs for Charlie's Taxi per mile rate and initial rate. Um, the city and county has a, uh, set rating for all of those things. And, uh, Charlie's Taxi states that because of the competition of Uber, uh, of Lyft and and of the other transportation systems, the Skyline and the Bus and the Handy Van, they're unable to meet their financial obligations to allow them to continue to to be profitable, to continue to be on. So they are putting an amendment in to completely remove all set ratings from the administration in the city and county. So if you do not want that to happen, please contact your, not your legislature, your city council member, because it's all going right now through the city council. And they have, I put their presentation also online as well, inside that same folder. And that's all from my report.
Wow, thank you so much. Any questions for Skylar? We're gonna move on to Dennis, Military Affairs and Emergency Management. Are you back in the state?
Oh, I'm in Japan, but I'll be back in the middle of next month and I'll be attending next meeting.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Darsha for Health, Houselessness, and Human Services.
Thank you, Chair. So as mentioned previously, Kealaho West Oahu is now our houseless outreach provider. I did get to talk to them and they expressed that they still do have needs for clothing, socks, toiletries. So if you are interested in donating any of those sorts of things, you can contact them at 808-745-7880. Also, they do accept volunteers if you're interested in that, but you do need to sign confidentiality agreements because many of the people you'll be working with, they have very sensitive things that are going on. And that is my report. Thank you.
Right, any questions for Darsha? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to Parks and Recreation and Patsy Tving, Central Waho Regional Park. Sabrina? No report. And on to education, Marilyn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report. All the schools routed on spring break, but we look forward to April when we find out what they're planning for the end of the year.
All right, sounds good. We're gonna move on to the elected official reports. I'd like to welcome Mr. Nestor Garcia, representing Congressman Ed Case.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for those of you who are still here in the audience in person and for those who are watching online. We're here again. This is my second appearance in the first quarter, so usually only do one. But you're a good board, so we like to come here. You're gonna be lucky tonight, because you're not gonna be hearing from me, actually. We have one of our key staffers visiting us here for a few days from our Washington DC office. This is Anika Nozaki. And I understand she does, she did live in Mililani at some point. So she's a Mililani woman. And before she shares with you the goings on of Congress and if it is going on these days. And the work of Congressman Case on behalf of his constituents here in Mililani. I did pass out earlier tonight this constituent services guide. That's one of the things that the congressman does besides representing all of you in Congress. He makes sure that he takes care of individual needs and concerns. Yeah, this is constituent services. For example, I don't just deal with the media and getting his message out and what he does on behalf of his constituents in the first congressional district. But we also take care of people's concerns that they have with any agency with the federal government. For example, in my, in the office that I work at in downtown Honolulu, I take care of people who have concerns with the Office of Personnel Management. For those who have retirement concerns, yeah. And for veterans, I take care of the veterans. I sat in on a veterans call this afternoon. And there was some bit of news for those who are veterans. If you've been tracking the soon-to-be-opened Akaka Medical Clinic, yeah? At Roosevelt Avenue in Kalailoa. And so we'll have the grand opening on April 5th. And they will be taking in patients as early as April 8th. This is an inpatient clinic. There's been a lot of talk tonight about medical clinics. So this is an inpatient clinic. They'll be offering diagnostic services, mental health care. I'm sorry, not inpatient, outpatient clinic, outpatient clinic. So that's gonna be opening on April 8th, taking in patients. At the same time, for veterans who have been attending or going to the Leeward BA Clinic on the grounds of Queens West, that is going to close. That is going to close. It'll be decommissioned on April 5th as well. So with that, I want to turn it over to Anika, and she can tell you a little bit of what she does, actually. We're all in Washington. Anika?
Aloha, everyone. I'm here from Washington DC where I work on issues in education, financial services, social security. Really a jack-of-all-trades out there. But right now, I'm here meeting with community members and organizations, trying to figure out how we can best secure monies for Hawaii, specifically for fiscal year 2025. So at the federal level, Congressman Case just recently passed, along with his colleagues, federal funding for fiscal year 2024 to keep the government open and running. So that's great news. Other than that, he also just voted on a TikTok divestment bill, which I'm sure you all have heard of. And if you have any questions on that, happy to answer them. But that's it for me and open to questions. Thanks.
All right, welcome, Anika. Members, questions for Anika or Nestor? Go ahead, Emil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Nestor. I mean, I know that Congressman had a long time ago on his mind when he was campaigning the reform of the Jones Act. It's, you know, 100-plus years old law, and it still keeps Hawaii residents hostage because we have a shipment monopoly, and that's why we have such a high prices. So I didn't see it in your brochure either. So is it still in his mind?
Still very much in his mind. Been referred to the Committees of Jurisdiction on that and still waiting for a hearing date. So he'll be, he'll keep pressing on that matter. As you know, Emil, he's been kind of the point of the spear when it comes to reforming the Jones Act, yeah? So we'll try to keep the community apprised as well to make sure that hopefully that moves forward.
Members, any other questions for Congressman Case's office? Sabrina, go ahead.
A while back, I don't, I don't know if it was you or the congressman, he said he was working on a task force to help investigate the fireworks and how they were coming into the island. And he appropriated a couple of million dollars to do that. Do you have any results of that study or work?
Yeah, the Consumer Product Safety Commission, yeah. They were tasked to take a look at the importation of these aerial fireworks especially. I'm gonna have to get you that report. Took a look at it and then, let's just put it this way. We need to go back to the commission to do some follow-up. But I can get you the initial work from the commission on that.
Any other questions? Marilyn?
Representative Garcia, that's what I'm used to calling you. Do you think that the problems with the port of Baltimore will have any effect on traffic here?
I think the Transportation Secretary, the president, is working with the mayor and the shipping companies to make sure that the goods and services continue, yeah? But it's a very busy port. I understand the secretary was saying it was one of the primary ports to ship out, like farming equipment, for example. So we'll keep track of that to make sure that there's no impact here. I haven't heard of any impact here. Of course, you know, we get most of our goods and services from the West Coast, but, you know, supply chain goes all the way to the East Coast as well. So we'll keep you apprised to see if there's gonna be any impacts.
Thank you.
Any final questions for Congressman Case's office? Actually, I have a question. Nestor, Hiko was here earlier talking about direct lines in the ground in Mililani, which are now disruptions, causing safety protocols to be triggered and thus shutting down electricity for portions of our town. Are there any infrastructure monies available to assist the utility, especially for our community experiencing these struggles right now?
Let me get back to you on that to see whether or not the company has approached any one of the congressional delegation, yeah? There was some discussion, for example, about wildfires. So I wanted to also, I'm glad you brought that up. So in the chat, I did put a link to a wildfire guide that the congressman had put together. These are especially listing federal resources to deal with that, to prevent and to mitigate and to recover, you know, the lessons that we learned from Maui, yeah? So for that example, though, and this is the first I heard about in detail about what is happening in Mililani. But I'm glad, that's why we come here, to take, to learn from the, from the community what's going on. So we can go back and see whether or not the company has been discussing with any of the congressional delegation, if they need any assistance with regard to this particular matter with the underground cables in Mililani or anywhere else for that matter, so.
Great, and could you relay that to the congressman as well? That this was a priority issue that came up to the board from the community?
I learned about it by watching the news. That used to be my job before gathering the news and all of a sudden I gotta, I gotta hear it from the news, so.
Are there any, oh, go ahead.
So, this is for the young lady behind you. How do you feel and how does the congressman feel about raising, possibly raising the retirement age for individuals of the younger nation? And do we look at its continuation? Or are we going to just be like, next year it's 75, next year it's 85? Because it seems as if there is no answer right now for social security, as you said, as well as for the retirement ownership. What is your views? Maybe what you've seen up there in the White House? And what does the congressman?
Yeah, of course. So right now, the congressman's main initiative in that area would be the Fiscal Commission Act. And this would create a commission that would look at social security and the solvency over time. And, you know, that's his main priority, is making sure that social security payouts will continue through 2030. And right now, the estimates are that it will be insolvent by 2030. And so that is his main initiative, is to form this mission. Yep, yep, yep. So this affects me greatly, obviously. It won't be around when I, when I need it. And so that's, that's his main initiative, his main concern, is making sure that social security remains solvent for future generations. The retirement age, that would be something that would be considered by the commission. I'm sure it would come up. But there hasn't been any initiatives on his end in that.
Oh, okay, now we got more questions. Mary and Les, and I think we should close it out. We got a lot more elected officials to provide reports. Go ahead.
Okay, hearing how great social security's lifespan might be. Is there any movement? Would it be possible to make participation in social security an option? Where you didn't have to participate, you didn't want to?
I don't know of any initiatives right now in the House that would do that. But, you know, I can definitely pass that along to the congressman and make sure he knows that that's, that's a viable option, yeah? Yeah, that'd be good.
With that issue of the social security, you talked about implementing a commission. Of course, implementing a commission would cost more taxpayer money to put a commission together, right? Wouldn't it be easier for the Congress to just take on the issue and save the taxpayers of America to putting up money instead of a? It seems like we're always spending money on commissions and commissions and commissions. And when Congress can just take up the issue on their own, do you think Ed could probably, you know, talk to his colleagues and see if they could just pursue the issue without a commission? Is that possible?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think where the congressman comes in on that issue is they can take it up with all 435 members of Congress, but will they is the, is the problem. And so with the deadline looming so quickly, the commission would really be, the purpose of it would be to push that issue to the forefront and really force members to work and reach across the aisle and work together to come up with a bipartisan solution.
Any other questions from the board?
Comment on social security?
Well, no, we're trying to ask questions to our representatives. Okay. I see no more questions for Nestor or Anika, so thank you so much for being here tonight.
Chair, I see Anne free.
Oh, Anne, you have a question?
I have a comment. It'll be quick.
No, we're not, we have to move on in the agenda. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say I put a link to, to the myth of social security insolvency by none other than Forbes Magazine, and it's in the chat.
So noted. We're gonna recognize Tony from the, or the governor's representative for, who will be presenting on behalf of Governor Josh Green. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you for having me, Madam Chair, other members. I wanted to quickly let you guys know, I don't know if you saw it today, the governor did do a news conference to talk about the latest on Maui wildfire and housing initiative. He mentioned that the number of individuals who were in need of permanent housing has fallen from 7,796 to 3,109, which is a 60% decrease. 850 units under construction with midsummer move-in dates. And more housing projects are in the pipeline. They also mentioned the decreased costs of more FEMA resources, including debris clearance, condo and housing development. They expanded FEMA eligibility retroactively for all compact and free association families and completed temporary, a temporary school to replace King Kamehane Elementary for 350 to 600 students. And one of his bigger announcements was that he would not need to do a moratorium on short-term rentals because they did reach the minimum number of housing units needed to successfully house impacted families through the rental program. They do need more housing, though, but no moratorium will be needed. A few other things mentioned about the, his latest update was a request for 297 million for temporary housing to be built and ongoing recovery response, 65 million for the One Ohana Fund. And he did clarify that financial plan is strong with the general fund carryover balance of 681 million to 981 million in fiscal year 24 and 350 million to 650 million in fiscal year 25. That includes the full funding for priorities such as gap to cost of living, tax breaks, housing, healthcare, and climate. With that said, I also wanted to provide some responses to questions that were posed from the board last time I was here. Last, you asked about Senate Bill 2617, which was the real property prohibition. Well, I'm sure you saw the bill died in the legislature. So at this point, there's nothing moving forward. Trevor, you mentioned, can the state do eminent domain to purchase homes from people who don't live in Hawaii? I'm still awaiting an answer on that, but I'm, I do know that it's a complex legal question. So it might take a little bit of time to find that answer for you. Sabrina, you asked about families who suffered deaths. Does everyone in the household individually receive the 1.5 million? And no, that's a lump sum for the family. But if you suffer injuries, that is an individual payment per person for the varying degrees of injury. Oh, Trevor, you also had, has the state identified temporary housing land to house people in West Maui? Well, as you just mentioned, they identified enough short-term rental housing to address the housing need currently. And Emil, you asked about the election commission and Scott Nago. Well, he was voted back then, so he's in right now. Scott Nago is in.
When did, when was he voted in? I mean, the last?
Did it between this last meeting and this one, I want to say a few weeks ago. It was right after our last Neighborhood Board.
Because there was a meeting on March 19th and they didn't, the motion didn't pass. I mean, as far as what I saw, I yield that.
And that was the questions I had, so. Anything else? Let me know.
Okay, I see that it's 9:26, so I want to be mindful of everyone's time. Let's do about three questions for presenters moving forward. Let's do about three questions for presenters moving forward. For the elected officials, members, are there any questions? Les, go ahead.
I want to ask you, I guess you don't need to answer tonight. You can maybe go check into it. Is there still a hurricane relief fund? Or did it get moved over to another fund?
There's still a hurricane relief.
There still is, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, any questions from the members of the public? Please raise your hand. Great, seeing none, thank you so much, Tony. Tracy, welcome. Tracy is here tonight to represent Mayor Blangiardi. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Chair, board members, Trisik Boata, Mayor Rick Blangiardi is representative. Thanks, sorry for last month, but I'm here this month to take any questions back. Couple of things to mention, just to make it really quick. I know the mayor's report's on the table, but the town halls are started. So every Thursday, there's a town hall. Join us April 11th, 7:00 PM at Waheva Elementary. And that's the closest one to you folks. So put that on your calendar, please come join us and be prepared for any questions that you may have for mayor directly. So just a couple of things that we're responding on from, oh, and by the way, thank you Chair Bass, Representative. We had the zoo vote, and thank you, we're a fourth place and really support. Appreciate everybody's support for that. I know I bother some of you every night for 28 days, so thank you. So rail subsidy concern from the other month, you wanted to know the subsidy. Right now, they've got $85 million budgeted for the 24 budget for Skyline. That's the cost to operate rail. I think, you know, the rest of it's online. But remember, Ross had given some details. But if you want further explanations and it's not online, then let me know your specific questions for the next time, okay? And in the interest of time, I just want to make sure that I report back to resident Kaumora, who had questions on the tree watering, right? For our street trees, city trees, and those that are in the public areas. So according to the ordinance 3738, they have parks, rules and regulations relative to planting and maintenance of street trees. And under the section in planting and maintenance, item number three, it says that the department shall perform all general maintenance of street trees. However, abutting property owner shall be responsible for watering and weeding around street trees. So I have a copy of the rules and regs, but it's basically stating that the homeowner resident is responsible for watering and maintenance of weeding in the, in the area. Any questions?
Great, members, any questions? We have about three questions available. Yes, you, Trevor, followed by Sabrina.
So this is, you don't have to answer tonight, like you can come back with us. But does the administration anticipate requesting additional funding from the Department of Health or the legislature to provide, to establish more ambulance units? Because as I understand it, the closure of Waheva General's emergency room has greatly stressed EMS.
Thank you. I'll check.
I heard a rumor that the sewer tax that was proposed is going to be implemented after the election, that they're postponing the implementation of it.
The raise in sewer fees?
The raise in the sewer tax. I think it was like a wastewater tax that was coming down.
The waste, the stormwater one or the sewer fees? There's a couple of different.
No, not this, not the sewer fees themselves. It was a tax. It was a tax, like they were going to start taxing us on it.
Is that for the one like when the water runs off and the?
Yeah, and he came and gave a presentation on it. So it's a fee then?
I can check to see what the status of that is. Yep, okay.
Final question for Mayor Isra? Yes, please proceed. You have to miss, Miss Kaumora. Mike, yep. It's for the record and all the folks on O'Lelo and on YouTube.
I just have a question regarding the watering and maintenance of the trees of city and county. I know that the, the area around the walkway in front of your home, you're in charge, but what about the street trees? But recently, I spoke to Roxanne Adams, and she informed me that trees, when they get older, they don't need as much water. So I guess nobody waters them except rain. And all on the side, in the back of our house, between Mililani Town Wall. Because that's why I'm asking her for an in-service training for Mililani. And maybe the association can help us get a room to do this so that we can be well informed of what our responsibilities are as homeowners. Because now everybody's confused and disgusted because they've tried to reach out to city and county, and they've gotten nowhere. So this is why I'm pursuing it a little further.
So I just want to clarify that you're working with Department of Parks and Recreation, DUF, Urban Forestry to address the street tree, I mean, the non-resident area public street tree watering plan and chair. And so you're looking to do a training for that for residents? Okay. Okay.
Sorry, can I have you talking to the mic, please?
Sorry, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll repeat what she says. Why don't I take it offline? Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on, actually, if that's all right. You can go take it offline right now, Tracy. And then we're gonna, I see that Eric Monu is here online, representing Councilmember Okimoto's office. Go ahead, Eric.
Aloha Chair, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Fantastic. Aloha Chair, members of the board, Eric Monu with the Office of Councilmember Val Okimoto. I'll try to make this as quick as possible as we're in the budget phase of the year, and there's a bit to cover. I also, I'll also have this report finalized and in our next newsletter, which will include the financial numbers for everything. As mentioned, we have finished our first round of budget briefings earlier this month, and we're provided an opportunity to introduce our amendments to the budget, which includes several CIP projects in District Eight, a few of which came directly from this board. So we want to thank you folks for bringing these concerns to us, and we are very appreciative of our working relationship with you folks. We received the mayor's budgets priorities early this month, and we were able to add some new projects at the last full council meeting. That was on Monday, March 25th. The full council voted on the budget bill, and it will now return to committee, which will be, which will consider amendments Monday on April 1st. We do expect our amendments to be favorable and added, and the final budget is expected to be in early June. For the Honolulu Police Department, we requested funds to expand and train our Honolulu community, community police teams in all eight patrol districts. Additionally, we're requesting funds for the Honolulu, or I'm sorry, for the law enforcement explorer program and the pathways internship programs. Both programs are focused on recruiting young and eager candidates for our Honolulu Police Department. Good luck to my cousin Chloe on her internship and her dreams to be an HPD officer. We are also very happy to report that the Honolulu Fire Department has solicited and executed a contract for the department's first twin-engine helicopter. This aircraft will provide the HFD with a more capable and safer platform to conduct rescue and wildland firefighting missions. The Bell 429 twin-engine helicopter is expected to be delivered, I believe, in the fall of this year, 2024. The need for this upgrade, upgraded fire response aircraft is highlighted during the Maoka wildfires and, and, and and all of that. I'm also happy to say that we are able to include funds for an emergency egress route study for the Mililani Maoka areas that came out during the same situation that was brought forth by this board. For our districts, district parks, we have added funds for park development. This includes a community garden in the Mililani Maoka District Park and an off-leash dog park in the YPO Neighborhood Park. I'm also happy to report that we are able to add funds to added plastic tiles for repairs on the outdoor hockey rink called Maiku, the, the 10 acres neighborhood park, as well as funds for plans, design, construction, inspection, equipment for a stable and resilient covering for some of the lighting at the indoor inline skating facility. We have a few more additions that are outside of the Mililani District that I will include in the follow-up report with Chair Bass. If you folks have any other additional budget requests, we are kindly asking them to be submitted to our office no later than noon on Wednesday, April the 20th, or April the 17th. Now with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Eric. We're same process. Are there any questions from members and members of the public? We're gonna go with three. I see Catherine has her hand up, followed by Sabrina.
Yes, I, I want to know what's the status of Resolution 65?
Can I have some clarification on what Resolution 65 is?
Oh, that's the putting more dwellings in smaller lots.
Is this a state resolution or a council resolution? This, oh, oh, you're talking about the council resolution in regards to the state initiative for the, for the property.
It's regarding the, the state, I can't.
I can't remember, yeah. My understanding is the House bill with that has died in the Senate, and the Senate bill in the House is the one that's progressing forward. We are tracking that piece of legislation, and we'll keep you folks up to date as it goes forward. We, the council in a whole had concerns regarding it. We had a hearing last week regarding that specific piece of legislation. So we, we will definitely keep you folks up to date on, on, on how that one moves. But currently, it is in the House. It is expected to make it to conference, from my understanding.
Hey, Sabrina?
Yes, can you explain why the council member is not able to make the meeting tonight? And what her position is on the proposed pay raise for city council members?
Council member was in, in the office the entire day. I was with her, I forgot to mention this in, in our report, but we were out in Newtown in Iea this morning regarding a homeless problem that they're having in their district park between the driving range and the baseball field in between the association. She couldn't make it tonight because she had prior obligations, but she always ensures that either myself or one of her staff is at, at, at these meetings. And we have a very close contact with the chair and all of that. So it, anytime that the, the council member can't attend these meetings, she is very adamant that her staff is there and that are very knowledgeable of what's going on. So she, she does send her regrets for not being able to be here. And as far as the salary increases, at this time, the council member has reported that she will not be accepting any salary increases at this time.
Final question, anyone has a final question for Councilmember Okimoto's office? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, Eric.
Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, Kelly from Councilmember Wire's office. Are you still online? Yes, go ahead, Kelly.
Wire's office. I did send out a newsletter electronically earlier this afternoon, so hopefully you guys got it. Just wanted to highlight, so not to repeat what Eric had just mentioned about the budget, but just wanted to highlight that the Office of Climate Change and Sustainability is taking applications for an internship program. The Climate Champions is a part-time paid internship that lasts four months with weekly work hours from like five to 20 hours per week, depending on the site location. There's QR codes attached to the newsletter, but I'll also go ahead and drop a link in the chat as well. I also wanted to mention that this Saturday only, on March 30th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the city and the Office of Economic and Revitalization is offering a rent and utility help relief program. It's for new applicants only, and I'll go ahead and put the information in the chat as well. So you can contact them if you know anyone or help share the information that might be needing help. And again, it's for new applicants only. And then I also wanted to mention that regarding the YPO soccer field and the landfill situation, Councilmember will be doing an info briefing with the admin this coming Wednesday, April 3rd, at 2:30 in his Housing Sustainability and Health Committee. I'll also put a link in the chat as well for those who can't make it. You can watch it on O'Lelo 54. And then lastly, like a community, I guess, update if you want. Melamanu Neighborhood Park, I am aware of the light situation, and we are working with DPR.
Kelly, could you restate the Melanu, the Melanu project? We, we lost some bandwidth on your presentation there.
So some of the lights are not working. So we, we are.
Okay. So you're working on it.
Yes, we are aware.
Okay, so you're working with Department of Parks, DFM?
Parks, yeah.
Great.
And it, well, DFM, because Parks does not have their own electricians, some kind of electrical situation. So DFM will most likely be doing it.
Thank you, Kelly. Members, any questions for Councilmember Wire? Yes, Sabrina.
Do you know why the council member was unable to attend the meeting tonight and his position on the proposed raise?
No, I'm sorry, I, I don't, but I can go ahead and get back to you with that.
Any other questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Seeing none, thank you so much, Kelly. Next, we have Trevor Nagamine for Senator Michelle Kidani's office.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Trevor Nagamine. I'm here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani. Senator does send her regrets due to a schedule conflict. She was not able to attend tonight's meeting. I will just like stand briefly on her written report. There are pictures on the third and fourth pages of Education Week, which was held last week. And Senator would like to thank the various educators from the Lelihua, Mililani, Wailea complex area and Central Oahu in general, who came out to the Capitol to be recognized. Additionally, this is not in the newsletter because this just came out earlier today. But Senator has been informed that the governor has released a $7 million CIP appropriation for improvements to Kama Meha Highway between Kua Helani and Lanu Kuhana. Other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
That is great news. Thank you, Trevor. I recall that that was a, a project that this board fought for. So please thank the Senator. Members, are there any questions for Trevor and Senator Kidani's office? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a representative from Senator Donovan Dela Cruz's office here tonight?
Yes, I am on, online today, tonight.
Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alari Magella, and I am here on behalf of Senator Dela Cruz's office. Unfortunately, he is unable to attend, so I'm in his place. And I was going to share the same update as Representative Kidani's update for the CIP. So as of right now, there is nothing. But Senator Dela Cruz is going through current, wait, that means committee hearings for decision-making for budget within departments, as well as others coming through to him for bills. Other than that, I am happy to take any concerns back with me to the office if needed to.
Okay, members, are there any questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office? Sabrina?
Do you know when the senator will be able to attend our meeting?
Um, right now, looking at his calendar, it looks pretty hectic, pretty busy due to all the hearings coming through because we are getting to the later half of legislation session. But I will attempt to ask him if available, when he can come. Usually, his nights are pretty filled as well.
Hey, any other questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office? Seeing none, thank you so much, Alari, for joining us tonight. I see that Representative Amy Peruso is online. Please go ahead, Representative Peruso.
So as other folks have mentioned, we are moving into the last part of session. Last Thursday was the second lateral filing. And I'm happy to report that the House passed over a budget that did not require that we. that did not require that we make any deductions from the department's or agency's base budgets. I was particularly concerned about the Department of Education and the University of Hawaii's budgets because of what happened last session. So I, I look forward to the budget outcomes around public education, but we have a positive offer that went over to the Senate. And then I will also say, one bill that I think folks should continue to watch is SB 3207, which removes the cap on the superintendent's salary. That's something that I, that I questioned the department and the Board of Education leadership about, because the superintendent already makes quite a bit more than the governor. And he has just recently, in the past two years, hired two, created two new positions, deputy superintendents, both of which are also very highly paid. So this is a question, if we're in, in a situation of fiscal constraint, a question as to why we would be increasing our superintendent's salary. Is that something to consider? And I also wanted to share that the governor also announced new nominees for the Board of Education. And this is really important, because we have had three board chairs in the past, I think, three years. So Bruce Voss, Haruki, and now Roy Takumi is the most recent nominee. Roy Takumi served in the House of Representatives for 30 years. And he served as the Chair of the Education Committee from 2002 to 2017. So he has a lot of experience. And I think it's also important to note that our own Mililani Middle Principal, Chang, was also nominated to the Board of Education. And I really look forward to working with both of those folks. Mary Hattori is, is another nominee. So we're gonna see some changes in the Board of Education and also in the Board of Regents. And I hope they're gonna be able to help us navigate this relationship between the legislature and, and these, the respective boards smoothly in the coming years. And I think the last thing I would mention is really about community organizing. Our office met with Haime again today. HARP is restarting, they're rebooting, they're doing the HARP 2.0. Brandon Sakai, as we've talked about before, has, has been working on the HARP structure for Mililani. And I'm hoping to see that reorganized, our, our HARP, Wahihua and Whitmore Village, works through our office. But it would be great to have Mililani as part of that disaster preparedness network. And then, oh yeah. I wanted to mention, if you're familiar with NAEP, that's the Nation Scorecard. I was just named as a finalist for the board. So that's something that is a huge honor and I wanted the community to know that we might have some Hawaii representation on that national board. So I'll be sending my letter of intent to the Secretary of Education Cardona in probably next week. And I'm available for questions.
Congratulations, Representative Peruso, and also congratulations to retired Principal Lynn Chang, who is actually a Mililani resident, being nominated to the BOE, so that's exciting news. Thank you for sharing that. Members, are there any questions for Representative Peruso at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much for your report.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Live and in person, we have Representative Matsumoto. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Board, Members of the Public. For my report today, I wanted to focus on two main things, but I'll go through the rest of it. The first is we're having our next town hall meeting, the day after the mayor's meeting. It's on April 12th at Mililani District Park. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That's gonna be our legislative update. And so if you can make it there, again, please fill out our mid-session survey like we do every single year. Has gone live, so if you live in District 38, please go, you're gonna be getting it in your mailbox very soon. It'll be mailed out April 1st, but it's already live online at RepMatsumoto.com and you do have a QR code here, so you can decide whether you want to do it digitally or with the paper survey. We have had a lot of questions where people think they can only send one in per household. Every single, every single person in your house can fill it out and send it in. It does not just one per household, so wanna, we've gotten a few questions about that. And I know it's confusing when you only get one piece of mail in your mailbox, but please fill that out. So again, that town hall on the 12th is on the next page. I also did want to highlight, I got to participate in Mililani Citizens Patrol. They're going to have their next patrol on Thursday, April 25th, at 5:00 PM, starting at the Mililani Shopping Center. So if you want to get involved with that, you can go to bettertogetherhawaii@gmail.com and you can talk to them about getting involved. And they also have, coming up on April 13th, suicide prevention training. And so that is a free training that they're gonna be having on April 13th, from 9:00 to 10:30 at Mililani Shopping Center. So wanted to share that information for anybody who wanted to volunteer and get involved. There is a lot of different updates of things that we've done in different groups that have come through the Capitol. But I did want to highlight, we did a floor presentation for Mililani High School State Champions. So we had the boys soccer team, who went 16-0, so undefeated this year, which is pretty impressive. Always fun. My brother was on the soccer team, so always loved seeing them do well. We also had a swimmer, Belice Smartwood, who won two championship races in, in swimming and will be going to MIT to swim there. And then also Jerusalem Moku Jackson won the 190 weight class state championship. And I actually watched that and he won in the last three seconds. He was down by one point. So that was exciting. And then we had today, we had the Easter baskets with the Women's Legislative Caucus, which my office has run for the last 11 years and it was wonderful. We had over 200, 200 baskets that were given. And then I did want to thank everybody who came out to the Personal Safety and Disaster Preparedness Town Hall that we had in Mauna. We had HPD, HFD, DOFA. We had Department of Emergency Management and DOT. And at that meeting, I wanted to just mention specifically DOT highlighted their plans for Mililani Mauna for the emergency access road. So currently it's gonna go through the, the dog park, straight out into the freeway. So if anybody wants an update on that, they have the map that they drew out. And so they're moving ahead with that plan. And so that's something that's exciting, because I know it's been a long time coming. And then there's just a few resources that you have here, as well as some of the measures that I still have moving through the legislature. You can take a look on the last page. So I raced through that, but that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Representative Matsumoto. Members, are there any questions for the representative? Mike?
Do you know that bill is going with that cesspool pollution fee?
Which bill? There's a lot.
I think it's 2743.
Mike, I'm gonna have to pull that one up.
Okay, I mean, because it could cause a lot of problems for me, because I have cesspools and it'd be a huge fee per month if taxed, I'd get taxed out of paradise. I don't know if I could afford it. Only people I could sell the place to would be chicken fighters. You'd have about 2,000 roosters right below Koah Ridge. I think you'd have calls every day.
Okay, I'll get back to you on that one. 2783?
2743.
43, okay.
Any other questions for Representative Matsumoto? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we have Representative La Chica online. Hi.
Aloha, hi, good evening, everybody. Apologies, we couldn't get the newsletter printed on time, but I did share a link early this afternoon with Rachel and then dropped the link here on the chat. And then, Michael, I did, I just quickly pulled up that bill. It looks like it's dead for, for this session. I don't think it got its first hearing. For my newsletter, so just a couple of things. Because Rep Matsumoto had highlighted the, you know, Citizens Patrol, we put that in there too. And on my survey will be our legislative issue survey on the different pieces of legislation that we're watching. It's getting to that point where we're, you know, nearing conference. So it's hitting that critical point, period during the legislative session. So residents of District 37 can either respond to that survey by visiting my website, mailing the newsletter back in. So if you're a resident of the district, you should have gotten a copy. If not, please let me know. And then, yeah, I think the last piece is just during the interim, during the recess, I got to visit some of the district area schools and then advocated for some of the funding that had been on the lapse list. And happy to report that the House budget that had crossed over did restore a lot of the, you know, fun, funding, as well as some new funding for our schools. And I think that concludes my report. Any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Members, are there any questions for Representative La Chica? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. All right, that concludes our reports from elected officials. We're gonna go into announcements. Friendly reminder that our next Neighborhood Board meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 24th, here at Mililani High School, 7:30 PM. And with that, I move that our board adjourns. Is there a second?
I have an announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry, who has an announcement?
Anne.
Anne, can you make it really quick? Actually, we're in a motion to adjourn. Really quick.
Okay.
We're in a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll, I, I will be quick. I, I've been in the middle of having been caught in a banking scam. And I'm finding out that in talking to people around the community, that this is a really common problem that's now increasing. And so I'm asking that we have a presentation, a forum, something that deals with this problem that is pretty much not going, not being addressed. That's it.
Okay, so Anne, why don't you contact me and we can take this offline?
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, so back to the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, in the adjournments, say aye. Those opposed, those abstained, we're adjourned. Thank you.